Yesterday.
Saturday.
Saturday.
Where's that at?
I think it was at Lincoln Trail. I didn't go to Danville.
You didn't go to who? That was yesterday, right?
Yeah.
I didn't go to either one of those last shift because that's about as close as they... Yep, this way.
Yep, they play it all over here next weekend or...
Oh, they do?
Yeah, okay. I'll tell you.
Okay.
I know. My neck's getting sore.
Can you see if the clip's on?
No, it always got turned and it's gotta come back.
I don't think I went without it.
I wanted to actually look at it.
I mean, it was there when I left home. Oh, there it is. It's like...
You know, they always have the pretty faces facing the camera. Desha maybe. I'm hoping they're zooming in on her.
Okay, it's six o'clock. Call the meeting to... Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all of our visitors this evening. First off, Mr. Schwerman is going to introduce some of our... Oh, roll call first, sorry. Hey, I'm not used to doing this, so just give me a little grace.
Yes, Steve Bone?
Yes.
No problems on here. Brad Waldorf?
Yes.
Jill Winless?
Yes. Now we're ready to go. Mr. Schwerman.
Can you clap?
Absolutely, you can. I might give you Wednesday off, you never know.
All right, well, first of all, thanks for the invite, Mr. Johnson. I know, you know, when we first got the invite, we started talking about doing it at the December meeting, but with timeline and everything, this worked out better. So, I already know, hey, can we add these people? Can we add these people? So, it's good. It's good to recognize some of our kids tonight, and we're excited about it. I know they're excited about it. I feel like we talked about it, see? Uh, first of all, let's welcome as our golf team. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but the Junior High has a golf team, a very expansive golf team. Leo, come on up here. So Leo's nervous about this, so we've been practicing at lunch, right? Kind of fed him some questions, things that he can talk about. So, how it works at the Junior High is, uh, that they're... We don't have like duels or we don't go to different teams or courses and play other... It's if you want to play in the sectional, give us your name, and we'll get you into the sectional, okay? So, I think when Leo was a sixth grader, they talked to us about getting admitted into the sectional, and we did it. Uh, Leo's mom is our golf coach. Leo's mom goes to all the golf meets, which is nice. Uh, so, we actually recruited somebody else this year to go play with Leo in the sectional, and I think he broke his arm right before the sectional, so it didn't feel as good. But at the sectional, all right, did you look these up? Where was the sectional at, Leo? What golf course?
Eagle Creek and Paris.
Eagle Creek and Paris, all right. What'd you shoot at Eagle Creek?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, so he shot a seventy-seven. What tees did he play in, Ron? The tees they tell you, Joe? So, so, so that seventy-seven qualified Leo for state, so Leo went to state. Where was state at, Leo? Yep, yep. Okay, so how many people qualified for state from our sectional?
Ten.
So, ten people, what did you finish there? Thirty percent. What did you do at state?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, right? Well, it's a good experience, right? So, uh, do you just play one day at state, or do you get a play, come back, play two days? Is there a cut and then they come back? Nope, just one day? Just one and done, huh?
I was there at the course.
You didn't get a practice round in there? Your coach didn't take you out there the day before? You gotta talk to mom, right?
The girl was there the day before.
Oh, really? So you just show up and play it blind?
Wow.
So, uh, yeah, Leo's been in the sectional three years, qualified for state this year. Uh, he's a great kid. Uh, we have a lot of fun talking about golf. You know, we're trying to grow the sport at our grade, and a cool opportunity for Leo, so.
All right, now you gotta pause.
So next year, we're trying to recruit these, both of our, uh, both of our golfers are eighth graders, so.
Okay.
All right.
Leo, if you don't mind, can you come up here? They'd like to shake your hand and show their appreciation for what they've done.
When you start playing golf?
Four years old.
Now you're going. Oh, you are.
Can you beat your bed?
All right, the next group, I think, uh, is the eco team. Mrs. Walk, Mrs. Walk is our eco team sponsor. She takes care of everything. Uh, huh? She's the sponsor. She didn't talk about you guys.
Okay.
So Mrs. Walk does all this on her own, coordinates, tests the kids, get them, get some interest, get some excited. And this year, we went up to Shelbyville and had our best results yet, so I'll let Mrs. Walk talk about it because this is her deal. This is her baby. She spends a lot of time on it.
Okay. In early September, we had tryouts because we need four people, and we had an eight-person tryout, and we whittled it down to four. And we had Lydia and Asha and Kate Lowall end up going because one of them got disqualified and couldn't go. So usually, one person is the captain, and they'll take four tests, and the other people will take two, but they each had to take three, and they only come out like two days before we went, and we still ended up getting third. And that was out of, um, total of thirty-seven schools, but what was it, nineteen?
Nineteen, yeah.
Nineteen was pretty good in our division. Uh, they did Illinois trees, Illinois mammals, and Illinois wildflowers. And, uh, we went to, it's called Camp Camfield, and it's a little bit south of Sullivan, and they ended up getting third place. So I was very proud of them because they had to study a whole packet within two days and learn one that they hadn't studied, so it was pretty impressive.
So one of the cool things, and we've done this for a couple of years, a few years now, is when they came back to school that day, how excited they were to show everybody that they got third place. I mean, they were jumping up and down the hall and things like that. Quite the accomplishment, so, yeah, it probably was.
So, you know, the COTI Zoo, the science competition, what's leading up to that, what do you guys?
We just, yeah. We would come in at seven-thirty in the morning like twice a week and study and prep for them, you know? We went, we met at Evergreen Park. We looked at all the trees because they're labeled there. We took leaves off the trees and we put them in a, you know, pressed them and studied those. We studied, um, wildflowers there. We studied just packets of mammals, and they did a good job, so.
Very cool.
Yeah, so it's, we just make some announcements, if you'd like to try out. You know, meet Mrs. Walk's room at seven-thirty, take the test, and then we whittle it down from there, so. This is Asha Walls. Asha, you wanna stand up? And that's Lily Young. The third member is Kate Love, and Kate is on the seventh grade basketball team, which is in Rochester right now, playing in the regional game, so.
Well, we win.
No comment. So, so we appreciate you guys, uh, very cool. And, uh, come back to the, uh, award ceremony, and we'll honor you guys again. All right, congratulations. Thank you guys. Well, thank you, Mrs. Walk.
Okay.
Ladies? Ladies, please follow through here as well.
Congratulations.
Hey, they go reverse order.
Way to go. What grade are you in, eight? Oh, so not next to the... Oh, it's nice. We're gonna carry it on. Oh, good.
We're gonna carry it on.
Congratulations. And then the last thing that we're gonna present tonight is, uh, kind of a big deal. At the Junior High, we have a spelling bee, a school spelling bee. Uh, so, uh, we have, we'll go reverse order. Jack Arkin's here. Jack, you wanna come on up? Hannah Wagner's here. And then Brady Wilson is here as well. So this is, I don't know if you've ever watched the script Spelling Bee on ESPN, but this has kind of grown in popularity over the year. Uh, I think this year, we had thirty-seven participants in our, uh, spelling bee that took place on December eighth. Uh, we closed down the auditorium. These guys go in the auditorium. It's exactly like you see on TV, like you guys can ask for, uh, you can ask for it to be used in a sentence. You can ask the origin of the word. You know, you can try to whittle it down as close as you can to get an idea of how to spell a word. So, out of thirty-seven participants, Brady Wilson got first. Woo! He's excited. Spelling's not really Brady's thing. He's a math kid because his mom is the math teacher. So, we were just like, Jack Arkin got third. He told me not to spell that, but I thought it was pretty cool. And then Hannah Wagner got second this year. And Mrs. Mitchell said with the thirty-seven participants, it took a hundred and sixty-one words to get a winner. And what was the word that you won on?
Zimbabwe.
Zimbabwe was the winning word, so. So, big deal. Uh, I know some people, I don't, I guess you read the dictionary to study for the spelling bee. Uh, believe it or not, we have kids that prepare that way. Uh, but it's a big deal. It's competitive, uh, and you can, we do advance to, uh, what is it called? A regional competition? Was it not a regional? Regional competition indicator, right? Cause indicator? So we could go on, and then you just keep going, and you could actually qualify for, you know, what you see on ESPN if you keep advancing. Um, so, pretty cool. It's competitive. The kids like it. We just, uh, that afternoon, we call them out of their classes if they signed up to be in the spelling bee, and then we just worked our way through it. So, uh, I think it ended probably, I think last year, it ended after three o'clock, and we usually start around one o'clock. This year, I think it was just a little before three o'clock, so. So, pretty cool. Again, Brady Wilson first, Jack Arkin third, and Hannah Wagner second. Uh, they're proud of you guys. And Mrs. Mitchell, she's an eighth-grade ELA teacher. She takes care of all this, sets it up, gets the words, has it all ready to go, but she couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, so.
Okay.
One more.
Don't shake your hands, guys. Congratulations. What's the indicator? It's actually, uh, Richmond and the College of Marchals. Congratulations. And they've been studying. All right, thanks, guys.
Now we'll move on to the high school. Mrs. Eskew is here.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm Becky Eskew. I'm one of the counselors at EHS, and I'm honored tonight to present some of our Illinois State Scholars that we're able to make this night, but I'm also going to read the entire list because it is such an outstanding honor. Uh, so just a little background, the Illinois Student Assistance Commission, also known as ISAC, is the presenter of the Illinois State Scholar every year annually. Students qualify through a combination of their class rank and ACT and SAT scores. There's quite a formula that goes into that. Again, it's an outstanding honor. As a matter of fact, approximately ten percent of Illinois high school graduates earn this honor, so they're recognized as state scholars, so it's pretty neat. This year, we had nineteen Effingham High School seniors that have been named Illinois State Scholars, so we're very, very proud of them. I'd like to read all the names in alphabetical order. So if you are present, please step forward beside me, and we're going to just have you announce your post-high school plans. So up first, we have Abigail Cunningham.
I'm going to Frontier Community College to play softball, and then I'm looking to transfer to a four-year to eventually get a master's or PhD in astrology.
Astrology.
Wow.
That's great.
I bet you were inspired by this. Mrs. Wilson.
Next, we have Friday Cunningham.
I'm also going to Frontier Community College to play softball, and then I hope to transfer to a four-year for psychology.
Fabdillo. Andrew Donaldson.
I plan on going to Lakeland for two years and transferring to a four-year, then going to optometrist school, we have an optometrist.
Gavin Grismer. Anna Hertzel.
Um, after I graduate, I'm going to Tennessee, um, take a gap year, and then hopefully attend the University of Tennessee, and then possibly go into optometrist or a gynx.
Casey Jackson. Jolene Jang. Julia Kinder.
Uh, I'm gonna be attending SIU in the fall for, uh, business and accounting.
Mara Kirk. Madison Mates. Allison Miller. Kushie Patel. Ashley Radel.
I'm gonna start Lakeland for two years and then transfer to a four-year college, which is cool.
Mariana Vega. Lydia Warner.
Uh, I'll be attending the University of Mississippi in the fall, and I'll be going for accounting.
Lily Waymoth. Lily Wise. And Evan Zhao. Those are nineteen Effingham High School seniors that have been recognized as state scholars. Thank you to all of you for your hard work, to your parents for their leadership, and also to all the Unit Forty staff for their support through the years.
If he's in there, we're gonna be going.
Might have to do a double row.
You gotta get Becky in there too, though. Becky, stay in there with him.
I mean, there's been a lot of Becky's at the Junior High occasion. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. My pleasure. My pleasure. Well, thanks for coming. Appreciate you right here.
Thank you.
So that is a big congratulations and a way to go to all of our kiddos. Wow, no media.
It's ribbon. If you can find a seat, go ahead and have a... Plenty available up front.
I'd like to recognize any visitors that would like to address the board. Um, next up is the financial report.
Oh, that's me. Um, on behalf of REM, because REM's taking care of this still again. First of all, uh, I think I failed to do this last meeting, so I'll do it this one. Fund balances. Uh, we have a four-point-one decrease over last year. Our net fund balance currently to date is twenty-eight million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and five cents. The operating funds, which is the big four, funds are four-point-seven-three percent decrease over last year for a net total of twenty-five million, eighty thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents. Revenues this past month, the education fund, the local, was four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, eighty-two, eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. State was five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents, and the federal was one million, two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Other, we had none for this past month. Expenses, basically, that's listed on your expense sheet, anything over five thousand dollars. And then a recommendation for tonight would be that you take some action on, um, basically, to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of two-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, and to approve paying bills of one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and thirty cents. Questions about the finances?
I would just like to, if you could pass along the appreciation of REM for keeping things consistent from when Jason did them, because it makes it very easy to follow and read as we've moved forward, so we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the financial report to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of two-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, and the payment of bills in the amount of one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and thirty cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jane, second by Chad. Roll call.
Jen?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. In your packet, you have minutes from the two, uh, special board meetings. A communication and marketing meeting on January seventeenth, a human resources athletics meeting on January thirteenth, and a facilities and transportation committee meeting on January eighteenth. Do we do any sort of... The minutes are there. Does anybody have any questions about any of the committee meetings? Okay, and then the cafeteria report is enclosed. We don't have any student teachers. Fundraisers, Central PTO is doing, would like to do a read-a-thon. EHS Baseball is doing a Reaching Our Goals fundraiser, and the Junior High Band and Chorus is selling magazines and discount cards. Uh, field trips, Central Fourth Grade, uh, on two different days in April, will be going to the Wigwam Skating and Event Center in Terre Haute. So I am looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad. Roll call.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Jen.
Yes.
Um, there is a lot of correspondence. Um, I am going to first read a few sympathy cards, and then the rest are from Christmas, and I will read who they're from, and then we'll set them on the counter over here because they're worth reading. Um, there's a lot of lengthy letters and notes in here, and if we could just take some time after the end of the meeting to read through those, that would be fantastic. This one is, Dear Andrew and staff, thank you very much for the gift card and the fam- and the family... I should have... During this difficult time, I'm very thankful for such a supportive school family. Warmest regards, Danny, Quinn, and Graham. You don't just give, you give from the heart, and it makes all the difference. Thank you. Dear Unit Forty Board and Staff, thank you for all your thoughts, prayers, calls, messages, et cetera, during my mother's difficult journey home. Every call, message, or text was medicine to my hurting heart. Thank you for the beautiful plant as well. I am so honored and thankful to be a part of Effingham Unit Forty family. Love to you all, Lisa Miller. Um, this is a thank you for the ham and the, uh, bonus. Uh, I believe this is the special ed department at the high school. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson and board members. We'd like to thank you for the generous bonus. It was very nice to prize and sincerely appreciated, and this is all from the bus garage. Um, this one is from Erin Hardick. A very heartfelt note from Lisa Laritzen. Another note, I believe this is the math department at the high school. A very nice note from Linda Baker. Another from Catherine Zumwalt. A thank you from Ashley Klein. A thank you and note from Esther Thompson, custodian at Central. Uh, this is a note from the teachers and staff at Southside. A very nice note from Valerie Borgenmeyer at Southside. A very nice note from Michelle Morrissey. From the Central Kitchen staff. EJHS Cafeteria. Angie Jansen. Cheryl Scanlon, Southside Counselor. Andrea Kinder. These all have very nice notes in them, so we'll get to read them after the meeting. Larry Eisenheimer. Amy Hewing from Central. And then this is from the entire Central staff. It's a photograph. Um, it says, "We wanted to let you know how much we appreciate the half-day off, the half of ham, and the inflation bonus," and it has a little, so... I don't, somewhere in the board office, this will get... So we'll put this, put these over, and we'll get to take a look at them after the meeting. I would just like to say that that day, um, in the buildings was amazing. Um, next, we have the superintendent report.
And I would echo off of that as well. If you, if the public could see the number of people, staff, that reached out to me and what the rationale behind each one of them reaching out. There are a lot of people in our whole area that are in some dire situations and tough situations and really think it struck a good chord and did show them some appreciation. So I appreciate all of you being willing to do what we did. Uh, superintendents report, the foundation report, uh, looks like January ninth, they had a meeting. Student committee reports, they're just talking about two new scholarships. EHS Class of 1971 for Technical School and Family Gwen Mary for student going into education. Scholarships that will increase, uh, Unit Forty Foundation up to one thousand dollars, and the Gravenhorst up to seven-hundred-and-fifty. JFL intends on having a second scholarship, one for football, one for cheer. Scholarship reception will be May eighth at EHS Small Gym at five P.M. Uh, they've got obviously some reports on fundraising. Go ahead. That's something I probably need to report on everything. Somebody wanted to see it, we can share it. Actually, we probably, did we put that in somewhere the public can see at some point? Foundation fortune, now, that's just for the board. Okay. Okay. Um, next is enrollment. Total enrollment is two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight, which is eight less students from the previous month. Looks down just a little bit. Um, and then last but not least, right now, we've got a upgrade renovation type of, I don't know, whatever I call a project, so to speak, in the works with upgrading our libraries in each building. A lot of research going into that right now. We do have some estimates back from our contractors, which at this point right now is just a simple estimate, some estimates for us to get a gauge on where that would cost. In our last library meeting, which has about four or five of us, I believe, are involved in that process, Todd Tayley, who works for Building and Grounds for us, basically reported that the estimates you can get, we can obviously do that work for a whole lot less than what the estimates were for. So when we get to the point to, for a proposal and what we want to do and moving forward, I'll bring that back to you and give you some, give you some information on that. But at this time right now, it's in a very elementary stage that we don't know for sure what we're gonna do. We do, we do, I am asking them to look into doing it in a two-phase process, which would be taking care of furniture, carpet... We do, we do, I am asking them to look into doing it in a two-phase process, which would be taking care of furniture, carpet painting, any kind of items of that nature to get an estimate to me and potentially get those purchased before July 1 of our new fiscal year. And then if we're going to potentially move towards putting in an extra wall in some of the facilities to be able to split off from technology and library services, be able to keep it a little more quiet in that area, we will, we'll come back to you for some of those things because that's obviously going to be a little bit more money. I don't, again, I don't think that it's anything that will probably need to be bid, so hopefully we'll be able to take care of that. But we're just basically trying to step that up in every building, provide a much more inviting atmosphere. I know I had a board member or two reach out and make sure that we're including staff and maybe some students on that. Mrs. Flack Julie actually sent back information to me that she has already sought some input from staff and students and surveys. So we'll continue to work on that and that'll probably be a two-phase project, and I would guess two summers is what we would be looking at for that. Any questions, comments, thoughts in regard to that?
On the enrollment report?
Yep.
Is there a way we could add a column to the far right to just give us the enrollment of that same month or year ending, just to compare what the enrollment was a year ago?
Absolutely. I don't see a reason.
It can even be just a static number of what we ended up with last pay, just something to.
Right.
As a comparison to last year.
I've always wondered too, like about trends, you know, like a five-year trend, like in a graph form, that would be.
We can pull that too. Five-year trend and into the year or, well, let's see if we can go to year to month.
Yeah, whatever. Just a data point to be able to compare to, whatever's easiest for you, what you think makes sense, Andy, I'm fine with. Just like to have something there.
Yep. That's it, food.
Okay. Now on to new business. The first item in new business is board policy update and changes. Last month, we posted policies for review and public comments. The recommendation is to adopt the following board policies as presented. Do I need to read each one of these? Okay.
Did we have any money provided to feed that?
No. My guess is very seldom do you. There's only one or two policies in the last couple of years that are even hot topics and we like to leave those laying where they are and keep going.
Yeah, so the faculty and staff, they get the opportunity to review those before we.
Everybody does.
Is there a committee?
Now you have to understand too, this is not handbook policies. This is, this is press policy, board policy.
And so I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the board policy updates and changes as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Chad. Roll call?
Steve?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on new business is the SRO discussion and possible action.
Well, I pretty much possible action, just more or less to potentially put you as a board in a position to maybe give me a more of a directive on where to go. My vision and philosophy at this point right now is, to be honest with you, I feel like we should probably be in a situation that we have three SROs on property. Or we have one or two SROs and a police officer or something of that nature. So I've spent some time talking with Mr. McFarland with the police department. He's met with all of our administrators to try to get a feel for what do we want, what do we need and what can they do for us? Because at this point right now, the city does provide that SRO that we have, but we do pay a portion of that salary as well. So in my research with going through this process at this point so far, the plan that was given back to me was basically to keep one SRO at this time because they will have a hard time filling the spots of their police force if the current certified SROs leave the city and work for the district, which makes a lot of sense. I get that, that everybody's hurting for people. But at the end of the day, we, we, we need some more, not that we have anything that stands out, but just from a proactive security standpoint, I would like to have more staff on our properties. The city would help us provide extra SROs when a building admin feels they would like a presentation of some sort to be carried out, but they need a couple of weeks' notice to make that happen. So in other words, they could, there's some kind of system that the city could, could basically be a part of to where a staff member, one of their staff members that may be there off duty could be paid to come into our buildings if indeed our administrators wanted some kind of presentation on something dealing with law enforcement. This would be carried out in a higher backs process where they will secure officers and that are off and can be available for us. We would be billed monthly for that service. The other option that was thrown out at me was to consider some kind of security options as, such as a security company to provide us with a police presence if needed as secure regards. I don't know of any companies like that in Effingham, so we'd probably have to be going outside of the city limits to find that service if we were to do that. Outside police agencies such as, we could contact Altamont, T-Town, Deereck, any of these other places that maybe they would have some law enforcement that would be willing to help us a little bit. And then of course, social school security officers that are retired. And we do have some very good retired officers in this area, in my opinion, that I think could be utilized to some capacity. But I, but again, I, you know, my question and my concern and my desire, and in talking to a lot of you, I do believe that you have a lot of the same sentiments as I do is, we can never be too safe right now in this society. And that's what I'm after. I would like some help in that area. So I don't know, I don't really know where to go next. Is it something that you as a board feel that I should maybe proceed to the city council? I assume that's.
Personally, I do. And I mean, I'll just, I'll be really frank about this. I don't think there's anything more important in our community than the safety of our children. And if there is, I would like to know what that is, one. Two, I understand where law enforcement is hurting to try to get people on board. I get that 100%. I got this son who is as well. And the only problem is, is usually when something happens, after it happens is when, okay, now we need more. And that scares me. You know, it's almost like something has to happen and then we get more enforcement. But, you know, again, back to the PD, I totally understand it. I would like to try to figure something out also. I think we should reach out to ISP, Illinois State Police. Their district headquarters is here. They have people patrolling. And I'm not even saying they're in the building, but like through patrols, if they could drive by just through the parking lot, you know.
So you think it stands out?
Yeah, just, just to have an additional presence. And all the city guys, they all know the state guys. State guys, they all know the city guys. I mean, it's just a font.
I mean, it seems like maybe we could do some hybrid to, you know, have someone controlling, but then also maybe identify someone who's retired that could maybe be a leader in the position to give us ideas going forward.
I'd like to, you've obviously got that proposal from Chief McFarland, but I think we should put a counterproposal together of some kind of hybrid model like what you've been describing. Just from a personal experience, the company I work with does engage with a local security firm and it's difficult for them to recruit people to cover as well. So the services are definitely out there, but they, they face the same challenge. I think we would have better, more aligned support if we could continue that relationship with the Effingham PD and then with other resources too. But I think a counterproposal would probably be our next step, be my recommendation.
We can work on that, absolutely.
Is there any ability to use both county and city? I know, you know, it used to be county. That was before this board. And then it went to be city operation before we were here. So, you know, I don't, I don't know the history, but I mean, why couldn't we share it?
Right.
If we need to go to a council meeting or a committee meeting, a couple of us, then by all means, we're willing to do that. Because like Steve said, it's the most important thing we could do right now. We don't want to wait till after an event.
Right. I'll work on a proposal, counterproposal, talk with you guys and see where we go with some of that. And I will say too, you know, again, in my short period of time here, very appreciative to the local law enforcement. If we call, they're quick. But again, that's, that's being reactive on our end and I just think we need to take this to another level, the proactive side. So we would love to have, you know, from my understanding, there was an SRO program in this district that was rather robust. I mean, we had some police officers that were outside playing on the playground with kids, playing kickball and sitting in the classrooms. I mean, you smile, so you, I mean, there was a lot of stuff generated around that and I think that's something that I would love to see back in, back in play again, so I'll work on that.
With how many buildings do we have?
A bunch.
And one person, that one person can't do it all.
Correct. We can't expect any one person to, so that's, that's, that's the need for the extra personnel.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else on that?
No, I mean, it's, it's a sensitive topic, but you know, we're hearing from our kids that they have suggested that we have metal detectors. Our own kids in our own buildings are suggesting that. I found it extremely interesting. You know, it does become a logistical issue, but again, what do we do in the name of safety? I mean, is that something that we need to look further into?
And I think that we could investigate on our own or also if we identified someone in the private sector that's going to help us with this, then they can also.
Provide us with expertise.
Provide some expertise on how effective that would be or whether they, you know, feel like it's a good idea or where we place those or.
And I think that that technology has come a long way since, you know, the airport archway scanner. You know, I think there's more of a robotic type of things. I feel like I've seen that at the, on the trade floor at the school board meetings, maybe. So, you know, it doesn't have to look scary. It doesn't have to look.
Yeah. One thing that came up, where you're mentioning is the wand. Should we ensure that Professor Volpe has one of those so that when we need that for searches that we have that if.
He doesn't have one today?
No, I don't believe that.
Or we don't have.
That came up with your students.
We don't have one.
Okay. But in the meantime, we should do everything you're saying, but that's an easy one that we should be able to get the funding for and have that accessible as necessary.
And just so everybody understands too, that's, I mean, we're talking about that to potentially catch students in our building with DAP pens and devices that they're unfortunately utilizing drugs with. So, so it's, it catches a couple, you know, it's going to clean up a couple of things there, so. I'll look into those and I would prefer we own them. And he can utilize them when he's here. It will be something we'll probably have to talk about a little bit before we start doing. So that we might add that to the policy or something.
Right.
I'll come back with some information on that, but great, great point. Absolutely.
Okay, does anybody have any other SRO? Okay. So no action this evening, but we can look into some things.
Absolutely.
Next on the agenda is the parking lot.
Yes, we are looking at, and I wish I'd shown this on the screen, but basically in a nutshell, here's where we're at. We've got, we have priced out the board office being extended parking here and around back because I don't know if you've been out here when we've got trainings going on and things of that nature. We're pretty fortunate right now that our neighbor's next door, I'm sure we're overparked on their property because we don't own that next building over. We do own the grass all the way to the, to the corner or to the sidewalk down there, parking lot. But we're looking into, and I, and I will tell you, my philosophy is that we do a parking lot and we put it down that it can stay as long as it possibly can. Okay? Not something you have to do repetitively, so therefore we're pricing out right now concrete parking lots. So what I would propose at this point right now, we don't have to act on it tonight, so it's just a, this is just a discussion, so see where you want to go. We're looking at extending a little bit off to the south and then we would come in behind here, behind this building only with that. We will also possibly put a fence up here because right now we have a lot of traffic coming from that parking lot as they park their trucks and walk through here, pick up food down here and back. Okay? So we would, we would like to put a fence up possibly at some point along with that. We've, we've got a, just again, this is just an estimate. We're talking about, you know, $200,000 for a parking lot out here. All right? Parking lot at the Early Learning Center. Mrs. Fox can probably tell you, it's probably long overdue, but the thing that we wanted to do too was kind of keep an eye on, are we going to be vacating that building and so on and so forth, which she doesn't even know. But 30 minutes before I walked in here, I got my you failed notice that says we didn't get the $10 million grant that we wrote for. So that's off the table for now with extending our, our daycare, or not daycare, but free gate somewhere down the road. So, but the parking lot, if we were to keep that building and upgrade that parking lot and do all that needs to be done to it, we're talking about $250,000 roughly for that parking lot. Southside parking lot right now. This is all concrete bits, yes. So we, obviously we could back that off a little bit if we wanted to and go to asphalt, but anyway. And then the last one that I have is the Southside School for right now. The city is going to be doing some work to the east side of whatever street that is. Right now we have cars that are parked on that street for our staff. That's also a drop-off spot. Right now, the current curb there is about 30 feet. They are going to extend that to 60 feet for drop-off on the backside. And while over there walking the property with the city engineers, I asked, wouldn't it make sense to potentially, in the back corner, which is the southeast corner, to turn that back corner into a parking lot, which would mean take the fences down the backside, absolutely put fences back up. But put a, put a parking lot right there where it would have a come-through coming off the, whatever street that is from the south, the curves through. And I think it's Craig Street that runs east and west.
I think it's Fifth Street.
Fifth Street?
Yeah, it is Fifth Street.
So back in that area, you're talking about $260,000 expenditure if we did that in that area. However, it's a great entrance. There's a, there's a great opportunity for staff to come straight in with a back door right there. It also would clean up the backside of that building. We've got some asphalt. It's in not very good shape back there. It's just kind of a hodgepodge over the years built to where it's at. While the city's doing this work, it made sense to potentially turn this into a parking lot to give us more parking, safer parking off the street so that on the south side of that building would just be pickup and drop-off. Everything else for buses, I think the parent pickups at the other end of the building and then so that'd be staff on the backside and staff on the front side. So really kind of cleans that up and makes it a nice, nice movable area, functionable area better than what it is right now. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on what to proceed, what, how to look at some of this facility? When you talk about this facility, because I didn't have it or did we? We talked about it a little bit.
Have you talked to any of, you talked to Sherri about Southside?
Yes.
Okay.
Look, she was out there with me.
Okay, I was just trying to think visually how they're going to incorporate pickup, because pickup is on both sides now. They, they started.
The buses?
No, parent pickup. They started parent pickup on both sides during the pandemic and they decided to leave it.
Oh, really?
So first graders are on the east side and the second graders are on the west side and so they split. So I was wondering how that parking lot is going to affect first graders. So I was wondering how that parking lot is going to affect first grade pickup, that's all.
Right.
Which I'm sure she's thought about.
She has. I don't remember what she, I don't think she said anything about it that day.
Or maybe they rolled that to parent pickup all on the other side, I don't know.
Right. I guess my question to you would be, I want to kind of throw numbers out there and throw ideas out at you first. Do you want me to move forward with a proposal, figure out how to pay for it and then get the rationale behind why such as Southside, we would move forward and what it would do to the current makeup? I can come back with that. Actually, I probably forgot to tell Todd to come, but I thought he might be here. I think we had that discussion with you, but I can dig deeper, we can go. The biggest thing I'd have to do is the fund, funding side of it, if we're going to go to all three of these, because you're ballpark a million dollars.
I think people probably want to at least see.
Sure.
I know that asphalt, I think everyone's frustrated, look how often you have to redo it, but they probably just want to see the numbers.
The comparison.
That would, that would be my comment only because most of our other buildings have asphalt.
Right.
And if we're looking long-term into possibly having a new K5 building or, you know, that's in the strategic plan, just saying. You know, those, those two buildings don't have to last as long if we are going to move forward and-
It'd be nice to know when funding is out there available and prioritize the projects too.
I agree.
What can we do now?
Come on. Yes.
And is lighting and everything included in the, in the bids for the parking lots? I was thinking behind this building, maybe security cameras or something like that? Parking lot lighting?
We'll have security cameras because we're, we are putting cameras on this building.
Okay.
As part of the upgrade, but we don't have any lights, you're right. So I'd have to check into that too. Yeah, we'll, we'll come back and again, it's just a discussion item tonight anyway. We just started talking about some of it in the last week.
As things escalate from a population next door, things will be impacted here.
Correct.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Well, and I mean, I have been here during the day when there's been meetings in here and there's nowhere to park.
There's nowhere to park.
Yep. Yep. It's an issue.
Right.
And I think before we would have put a parking lot back there too, we might even talk to the owners next door, see if they would be interested in doing it all the way down the side and paying for, you know, it's our property, but we could allow them to park on it if indeed that's something, you know. Just some options that may help us a little bit with the whole thing.
Yep.
So I'll check, we'll, we'll look into that. We'll come back, probably facility meeting first with a lot of this information and then come through that to here. Anything else you got from the facility committee meeting that we talked about? I don't, I think that's pretty much most of it.
Uh, there was a, what presentation did Tristan, oh, we talked a lot about vehicles.
Right. But I just, we're not doing that this month. We'll do it next month.
What about that HVAC system at the junior high?
Yeah.
Did you guys talk about that?
We, we are on that right now. We had an HVAC system put in two summers ago, two, two years ago maybe. And at, at the junior high and the big, I don't know, 14, 15 million dollar renovation project, had a lot of issues. We are still at a point where we have not paid every vendor yet because we do have some concerns with the fact that maybe the product or their manner and how they've handled things isn't up to speed to where we want it to be. So right now, Pecker Construction is the, basically the contractor over it or the CM over it, and they have done a great job since you and I spoke. We've had multiple meetings. Todd Taylor's basically leading this with Charlie Schwarmen because it's in that building. I mean, we're, we're going through lots and lots and lots of areas and I'm not going to tell you what they are because I don't know, I'm not a HVAC expert, but we have the right people involved right now trying to narrow the problem down. We didn't have that before. And honestly, we're, we're in a position where we could be seeking legal action of some form down the road if we had to. It's not something that I want to do, but it's definitely something that would be, have to be considered if, if we don't get it fixed.
And this just came up the night of the blessings backpack and me standing next to Todd Taylor and it just, it came, came up because he had something to deal with that day.
Thought I'd probably share it with a board member since he was there, so Todd and I did. It's because we're rather frustrated over it. You know, we've had rooms with a temperature of 77, 78, 79 and can't get it dropped.
Okay.
We've got rooms that are 45 and 50 degrees. I mean, we've been told potentially that the, the heating system can't keep up with the cold temperatures we had earlier this year. Well, that's somebody's fault on the product side. Because everybody knows what happens in central, central Illinois. So, so we're, we're working on it. I do feel more comfortable than when I talked to you that night, that we were not happy at all than that night because some of that had just gone down in a day or two when we were out there. So make sure that, so I do think, we hope we're heading in the right direction. That's it for-
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the memorandum of agreement with the ECTA to amend a portion of the party's collective bargaining agreement.
And I can tell you that basically what that boils down to is in the early retirement, in the, in the terminology and language of the collective bargaining agreement for the ECTA Teachers Association, it states that you have to have worked in this district for 15 years to be eligible to participate in the ERI with the Early Retirement Incentive. I've asked the board to basically move that from 15 years to five years of service rather than 15. Part of that's because we are seeing, and actually we have an example of that on the docket tonight, if, if you approve all the personnel. We have some experienced teachers that are willing to come into this district and I do think you might see some more of that. Because again, once you get to a certain stage, a lot of times in districts, your mobility's not there because you could potentially lose out on an opportunity to make a little bit more money on, on the end of their career. So that's, that's the purpose behind asking you to move it from 15 to five. I will say I did that in the district in Jasper County before I left a couple of years ago. It has, it's paid off well for them to land a couple of the better teachers in the area, in my opinion. So I would hope that it would do the same for us.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the MOA with the ECTA to amend a portion of the party's collective bargaining agreement. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad, roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
So if we move it further, I would also say that in my opinion, that begins tomorrow morning after this has been signed tonight. So, you know, I think in our language, we've got that someone that would be eligible to retire would need to get their letter into us by April 1st or May 1st, I'm not sure, for ERI. So that will play, it could play into this year, so people potentially submitting their early retirement incentive application.
And that is a three-year?
It's a four-year.
Four-year, four-year, okay.
If you get out in front of it far enough.
Okay. All right. We are now going to adjourn to closed session.
Sorry, two more questions.
Oh, sorry.
Graduation, people keep asking me about graduation. Have we said that name?
We'll have it at the next board meeting. We've been talking about it.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
I need my wife.
Yeah, would be nice to know that in January, but we got to get through February, right?
Wednesday could change it now.
Okay, we are ready to adjourn to closed session. I will need a motion in a second to enter into closed session for student discipline, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district, litigation when an action against affecting or in behalf of a particular district has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent in which the basis for finding shall be recorded and enter into closed meeting. The fourth item is the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section 2.06. And for reason number five, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And that is in regard to five ILCS 120 slash two C5. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion by Desha, second by Chad, roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Chad?